Good evening, Honorable Minister, and thank you for joining us here on Business Today.
Good evening.
Minister, since you took office, you have visited various regional and town council to familiarise yourself, and you discovered a number of irregularities and gave your recommendations or instructions on what needs to be done. But some councils are seemingly defiant in implementing your recommendations or instructions. The question many are asking is whether your recommendations are legally binding or they are just mere instructions? And what happens when they are met with defiance, as we are seeing?
Let me state from the angle from which I'm coming from on these issues. One, let's look at what establishes these councils, these institutions, that are established in terms of law. And now, what does the law say? Because for anybody to become a councillor, to become a minister, you must subscribe to an oath before a chief magistrate or a chief justice. Now, in that oath, you declare that you are going to uphold the constitution and the laws of the Republic of Namibia. Now, the duties of a minister, what are they? Are they in terms of the act? Are they in terms of which law? My duties as a minister are constitutionally entrenched, particularly section forty and forty-one, which says the individual ministers are accountable for the administration of his ministry, individually accountable. And then, secondly, collectively accountable for the work of cabinet. Now, those that think I'm thumbfucking, they must go and read the constitution. Now, what are the duties and which law provides the duties of a local authority council? They are not constitutional. They are only in terms of the Regional Council Act, which is subservient to the constitution. The Local Authority Act, which is subservient to the constitution. Therefore, my powers, my duties, are constitutional above that of the councillor. People must understand that. And then, when they say either I don't have authority, I can only refer them to the High Court decision that was taken by the Namibian High Court, Supreme Court actually, in the case of Minister of Mines and Energy versus Petronet, where such a view was tested, whether the minister has authority to direct or not. But the Supreme Court said, yes, constitutional, the minister has that authority legally to direct. So I'm doing exactly that. And that case also is supplemented by the case of the Constitutional Court of South Africa, where the president had a case versus the rugby union, whether executives have authority over subservient or subordinate institutions. It was upheld. Once there is a constitutional power, that power is exercised constitutionally. It cannot be vice versa. So I'm giving you the constitution and the Supreme Court judgment here. And people must understand that. And unfortunately, we have a problem that our people don't read. They don't read the law. They don't understand the law. So they use opinions. I'm not here to use opinions. I use the fact as based on the law. So when I discover a maladministration and I give a directive, it's because I'm constitutionally directed to do so or legally authorized to do so. And now you say, if they don't obey, what is next? Unfortunately, the law again prescribes that if you look at the Local Authority Act, particularly section ninety-two, the law says if there is mismanagement in the local authority, the minister has got authority to remove that local authority or an individual councillor. It is entrenched in the law. And if they don't obey, then they go home because they came to save the people, not to save themselves. Now, it brings a question of how does one become a councillor, regional or local? What qualifies to be there? First and foremost, both the Regional Council and the Local Authority Act provides that for anybody to qualify to be in a council. You first of all must be a Namibian citizen. And I want to cut to that section, I think. In terms of section ninety-two of the Local Authority Act, it says if the minister is satisfied that the local authority is unable to exercise the powers and perform the duties and functions by law confined and imposed on such local authority, the minister may, by noticing the writing, after having given such a local authority council an opportunity to submit representation to him or her of such local authority, to take such steps in order to rectify the situations concerned. So I have to get there. If people are going to say, you have no authority, I have this legal authority to remove a councillor or to dissolve the council. And the act says further in subsection two, if a local authority councillor fails to comply with or adhere to an instruction under subsection, the minister may notice in the gazette, declare that all the powers, duties and functions of the local authority council or anything specified by notice shall be vested back in the minister. So I remove the council. I take over the power to run that council. That's the law. So we must appreciate that. Therefore, one, you must be a registered, you must be a Namibian citizen. The constitution requires you to be a Namibian citizen to qualify to be a councillor in a regional or local authority, even a national council. You must be a Namibian citizen in terms of the constitution. Number two, you must reside in that constituency. You must reside in that local authority. That's why we have three levels of voting. I vote nationally because I'm registered as a Namibian citizen to vote in the National Assembly election. Now, when it comes to provincial or regional elections, I must be a registered voter in that region. If I'm a registered voter in commerce, I cannot go and vote in Zambezi. I cannot. So you must be registered in that region. Now, we take it further. In that region, when you vote, you must be registered in that particular constituency. Like now, I am registered in Katima Rural. When we have elections in November, unless I change my residence in the supplementary elections, I cannot vote in commerce. It will force me to drive to Katima, to Zambezi, and vote in my constituency. And if in that constituency there is a local authority, then I go, take it further step, I say, yes, I'm qualified, I'm a resident in this local authority. So I qualify to vote here. So these are the parameters of the law. You must be a registered voter and a citizen. You must reside in that constituency or in that local authority. Now, when you are outside, residing is very clear. It's a common English language. You must be there. But there's some people that are arguing to say, I may reside in Katima Rural, but if I have a business in Ondangwa, then I can vote in Ondangwa. You cannot do that. Your business is not your residence. It's just a business operation.
Yeah, we are talking of...
People must make this difference. But some people are arguing on the basis of, if I have my business in that local authority, I qualify to be a councillor. You don't qualify.
And now, Honorable Minister, having that understanding now that your instructions or recommendations are legally binding, let's go into the specifics. How far have you gone with rectifying the error made by the Katima-Muliro Town Council, where vehicles and land were battered? The public wants to find closure. They want to know remedial actions.
I know the public is hungry for an answer as of yesterday. But in government, there is a due process. As I have read to you, there is an issue and the steps that the minister has to take. And those steps are actually, I can say, in terms of the law, was it correct for Katima Town Council to batter land with vehicles? Was it correct? The answer is no. Because these are two things. When it comes to movable properties, the council could temper with that. But land is an immovable property, which the law is very clear. For example, in section thirty, the local authority has amended states amongst other duties, functions, powers of the for the provision to acquire, hypothetically, or let any movable property. The council can do that. But when it comes to subsection two, to buy acquire with the prior written approval of the minister. And now, in this case, was there written approval? No. We searched the office. I sent a request to Katima Town Council saying, can you provide me if my predecessor had authorized? There is no authorization.
Doesn't exist.
It doesn't exist. So now, when it doesn't exist, I'm told now that some councillors in defiance of the law, they've authorized, for example, in Katima, there are some ships that do not have approval who have started constructing. And they're doing that at any cost, at any peril. Because why? In the matter, in the, I'll give you legal, the Supreme Court and what is the High Court saying? Katima-Muliro Town Council had a case with Dr. Kamwe. The same miniature. They never, there was no approval. And the matter went to the High Court. And the High Court said, what does the law say? The law does not authorize a local authority to give land and utilize the land prior to the approval by the minister. And that case was resolved in such way. And the same case with Katima-Muliro Town Council, Madino Hamba, also had a similar situation and lost the case. So if there is anybody who is using the land to say Sanquassa directive, we are going to defy, they're doing that at their own peril because we will follow the law. That's what I'm doing here. And I plead with the Namibians to understand that there is a due process I'm doing. And they might possibly, by August, will get an answer finally.
By August will be in a better position whether these vehicles will be returned to the owners and the land to the council?
But you see, there is a situation there. I impounded the vehicle and I gave instructions the vehicle to be returned.
So at the moment, they are not in use?
They are not in use. Now, the question is, will the owner accept them or not? Back or insist to say, no, it's my land? But the owner actually should have realized that he or she was doing that at his own cost because he did not have approval from the minister. There is no deed of sale as approved. So therefore, in the case of Kamwe versus Katima-Muliro, the High Court ruled that the money that he had paid must be refunded. Now, in this case, the vehicles would be retained because they were not battered properly or they were not made properties of the state. They are not acceptable as properties of the state or the council. So therefore, when it comes to payment, the question, who pays? If these people are going to sue the council, the individual councillors are going to pay.
That was my next question because...
Yes, they're going to pay.
We have a lot of cases where office bearers, they take irresponsible decisions. Government will be sued. So I'm glad you are bringing it up like those responsible should government be taken to go through the council. Then they will be responsible for the cost.
Section eleven of the State Finance Act says whoever is employed in an institution, a ministry or an agency, who causes a loss to the state should bear the consequences. Because why? Whether it's by omission or commission, I'm quoting for you the act. Whether it's omission by commission, you cause a loss to the state, you must bear the consequences. Because we cannot run a free-for-all. This is where now everybody's doing whatever they do, wrong decisions being taken when they know it's deliberate. They know it's deliberate. Now, because you don't take the pocket, they don't care. The state is going to pay. But the law says whether you have left, even if the councillors are going to lose in November and there are no more there, the law will follow them for the decisions they have taken. That's what the law says.
They will be responsible.
They will be responsible for this loss which they are causing to the state. And it's time that councillors or officials must understand that public funds are not individual funds. They're not individual funds. They belong to, even to my grandmother, if she was still alive, where she pays tax through vets and whatever. It is public funds and we are only employed to take care of what belongs to the public.
Moving further into the specifics, let's discuss the issue of Omthia, where the councillor who is working virtually from Winduk just attended a council meeting. After you have pronounced yourself that this councillor is no longer in the employment of Omthia Town Council. The same councillor in that meeting also tabled a motion of no confidence in the mayor, accusing the mayor of colluding with you to remove him from office. What do you make of that? Someone who is defiant after you pronounce yourself?
In the first place, nobody moved councillor Ndehotepo from the council. He removed himself. So he cannot blame anybody. The moment he knew that he qualified to be a councillor and local authority of Omthia, because he was residing there, because he was registered to vote there, the moment he relocated, permanently accepted, permanent residence and permanent employment in Winduk, he has disqualified himself. So he must not blame anybody. Therefore, even to go and table a vote of no confidence now when he is no more councillor is not valid. People must understand the law. You cannot be disqualified. Kamwe, qualify yourself. You cannot do that. It's not allowed. So therefore, what is at stake here is the issue of saying, what does the law say again? The council itself is divided. I discovered this unity there. And there is no collision between me and the mayor. I don't reside there. I didn't even know the mayor personally. I'm just doing what I'm supposed to do. In the sense that when you are disqualified, the moment the councillor relocated to Winduk, the local authority council itself was supposed to have taken a step to replace him. How do they do that? Because the law, you will see, I gave you the document, read yourself. The law says where a vacancy occurs, the local authority must inform the minister or the party. In this case, the member was a swap councillor. The council was supposed to make a resolution and informed the swap party to say, your member is no more here. Can you take the next person on the list to replace him? The council failed in that instance. Just like in Omthia, there is a councillor for IPC who resigned. Equally, IPC was supposed to be informed and they replace him. That's simply the law. So you cannot claim when you have disqualified yourself that somebody is removing you. We're not removing you. We are just simply saying, thank you very much for creating a vacancy. That's all we are doing. And we have to stick to that. You cannot, in this case, not even to Omthia, to Katima-Muliro and back. And Omthia, far away from Katima-Muliro, must bear the cost. I mean, when you get to parliament, you get to the council, you must have two things. Are you going there for public interest, national interest, or are you going there for personal interest? In this case, the particular councillor is demonstrating that he is there for self-enrichment himself. He doesn't care what happens to the people and the residents of Omthia.
And for someone who breaks the law deliberately, that person becomes a law delinquent. And in the future, we'll find the same person running for office again. The same office that he broke the law within that office. Is it not time for those individuals who are to be found law delinquent to be disqualified from running further in the future?
I am in a process, as I'm speaking to you now, to identify all of these people that have broken the law. And I will be informing all their political parties to say, this one qualified but is disqualified. What the parties are going to do is not my job. But my job is to tell them to say, this person was a councillor but did not adhere to the law. So it depends on the party, whether the party is going to refill that person or not. And it will be, every particular party will be doing that at any cost. Because why? The citizens, the voters, know these people. To say, this one, we voted for him or her, but it did not render service to us. Because the purpose of voting for a councillor in Omthia is because the person is going to render services. The purpose of voting for a councillor in a constituency is because the person must reside there and render services to the residents of the constituency. Now, when a person is outside, it means this person never rendered any service to those people now. And if a political party is going to fill the same person, it is a risk that the particular party is going to take.
And briefly, now that Ndehotepo continues to attend council meetings and which is supposed to be an illegal sitting if you have someone who is no longer in the employment of the council, should he decide to continue attending council meetings? What would be your next step?
The next step is that, I said, all the money that has been paid to him, not even sitting now or even previously, he will pay back. There are courts in this country. Whether he is no more councillor or not, as long as they receive that money and they've not refunded it, we're going to pursue him in terms of the law. That's for sure. We're not going to leave that. We'll sue him through the courts until he pays back that money. And not only in Ndehotepo, but some other councillors. I've already got a list that some other councillors also. Ondangwa has got that situation. Ongwadiva has that situation. Hrotob has such a situation. So we are taking, will take steps to recover. You cannot get paid for services you have not rendered. That's my stand. This country requires proper service delivery, requires proper governance. The citizens expect us to do exactly what they voted us to do.
In Opoh, you discovered councillors claiming SNT, but in actual fact, they have not travelled outside their jurisdiction. The same issue happened in Omthia where the CO claimed for SNT to attend the late founding father Semnioma's funeral in Winduk. But he did not travel to Winduk at all. The mayor wrote to the CO requesting for detailed information on how many officials travelled and also how many they claimed. But the CO declined to comment citing confidentiality. The mayor further made the submission for the matter to be discussed by council, but the item was removed at the management committee level. Can you put the validity of these two into context in the way forward? Let's start with Opoh then, Omthia.
The issue from Opoh is not per se councillors. The only wrong that the council have done is to approve an illegal payment. Because we have a situation where someone applied to be a CRO. And then, the appointment was declined by my predecessor. And then the council went against that decision of the former minister. And they decided, okay, we are not going to pay a salary because the former minister of my predecessor stopped the salary to be paid. And then the council said, okay, fine. If the salary is stopped, we are going to be paying SNT to this person, which is equivalent to a monthly salary. And this has been going for three years. This matter was even arbitrated upon at the Labor Court. And the particular staff member or the particular individual, because he's not employed in terms of the law, lost the case at the arbitration, but continued to receive SNT. Now, the question is, what does the law that governs SNT entail? The law says you are getting paid SNT because you have travelled from your duty station to elsewhere for a given period and for the purpose that you have travelled there. It must be stated, what are you going to do there? To qualify to be paid. Now, if a person is staying in Opoh, did not travel, but you pay SNT, what are you paying this for? And you see, when you authorize such a payment, you are held accountable. This is where the councillors now come in. They authorize that and they must be held accountable. Both of them.
Let's move to...
And that's for sure. I'm simply saying, if you get government money wrongly, you must be held accountable. This country requires accountability. And it's time, thirty-five years is too long, that people are allowed to do whatever they want to do. We need to start governing in this country. Because what we fought for was to come and lead this country appropriately, different from apartheid system. We cannot come and start doing, making it like a charitable game here. No. That's my personal understanding. If somebody else has got his or her own understanding, unfortunately, we differ on that. Because myself with that, the people of Namibia requires accountability, requires proper service rendering. Governance must be the overriding factor here.
Omthia, the CO, sixteen thousand claimed in SNT to attend the funeral services of founding father Semnioma, but he did not show up at all. He was seen in Omthia.
You see, there, the question is, what is the leadership of Omthia saying? Because the council are the ones that had won, appointed this chief regional officer, I mean, chief executive officer, was appointed by the council on the approval by the minister. So it's the council that must sit and suspend the CO, demand the payment back of the CO. I heard and I saw the document where he says he is not accountable to the mayor because of confidentiality, he cannot give the... Now, confidential to who?
SNT.
You see, this is where the problem is. Now, does the council or councillors that form that council, do they understand their powers and duties? Do they? That's also another problem. Or if they do, then they go into politics, say, ah, this is our swap member or this is our IPC member. People in this country don't eat politics. They need service, not politics. So we should do nothing to entertain that. So this whole thing rests within the council itself. The council must demand the CO to pay back. The council is the one that appointed and the council is the one that must remove. There is no way a CO can be above the council.
And moving on, Honorable Minister, some councillors around the country only survive with their little income they get from the council. But they live a flashy lifestyle beyond what they are getting, leading to the suspicions of brown envelopes being exchanged. What is your take on making sure that lifestyle audit for councillors becomes a must?
I fully concur with that concept that we need to go for lifestyle audit. And you see, right now, the majority, I'm not saying all, but the majority of people are rushing to become politicians, not because they are ready to render service, but for self-aggrandization. They want to get money. So lifestyle audit, not only that, there has been no auditing in almost, I can say, ninety-nine percent of the local authorities in this country have not been audited in the last ten years by the Audit General's Office, neither by the internal auditors. But when you look at the internal audits that have been recently commissioned, they reveal high malpractice in financial management. That's what leads to the lifestyle change because people are going there to get brown envelopes. People are going there to get money, not to render service. Whenever they get money, their lifestyle changes. Because they got the money now. So that one is a must we need to do.
Great. Another issue at the center of many town council is financial management. Like you said, where funds are being spent with little accountability. Is this not a criminal act that warrants heads to roll? Because taxpayers and ratepayers, they want to see those responsible for this behind bars if need be. Where do you stand with that?
Earlier on, I said, whoever causes a loss should be held accountable. Whether you were there, you have left, you will be held accountable. That's where I stand. I stand where we must be transparent in leadership. We must be transparent in governance and management. That's where I stand. Because if we don't do that, this country is going down. Even our only party, I'm a swap member, it's known. If a swap does not account to the people, then swap loses votes. Right now, we are sitting at fifty-one seats in parliament. What causes this is because the party has allowed this malpractice to go on for too long. And this is costing us. People are now looking for alternatives. Say, if the ruling party we voted for, nineteen eighty-nine, we have been voting for all this time, is letting us down like this, let's look for the alternative. So it is now required of the swap ruling party to be the first one to take a lead to correct its own mistakes. That's where I stand.
Perfect. And finally, Honorable Minister, because I understand you need to be somewhere and time is running out. This unity among councillors is a result of political affiliations and power struggle. It's impairing service delivery. How do you plan to address this as a minister?
This unity is not because of political affiliations. You find that the first layer of this unity, these ones are opposition, we are the ruling party. The first disunity. But among the members themselves, whether it is the opposition party members or the ruling party members, there are individual disunity because of self to say, it should have been me to be a mayor, should have been me to be a member of the management committee, should have been me to be whatever. This disunity is there. Unfortunately, unless people go back to the drawing board and say, what did we come here for? To come and work as a collective, not as individuals. You see, there is a councillor, there is a council. A council is a juristic person to which this individual councillor belongs. Now, when it comes to here, I've always said, when you are a member of the council, even me in cabinet, even me in parliament, I must not come there as a party functionary. I must come there as a leader. Because in this country, it's not everybody, every citizen who belongs to a political party. Some are not members of the political party, but they require services from those that are in offices. So how to address the unity? That must start with the party leadership, individual party leadership, individual government institutions. The management must calculate a sense of belonging if we really have to achieve unity for the benefit of the citizens of this country. Because if we are disunited, service rendering is compromised. And then, proper management of the institution is compromised. Like the case of Omthia, the councillors cannot agree together because they are disunited, the CO is doing whatever he wants. And the CO is now colliding even with the councillor that is living beyond the boundaries of the municipality for him to survive. And now you start going for finger pointing, you say, this one is colliding, this one is a hibernator, this one is whatever. It is nothing to do with that. We must understand you are coming there to render service. And when you come to render service, you should actually don't forget to say, before I arrived here, where was I coming from? Because this is what we forget as politicians, that our contract there is five years. You must know where you are coming from, because that's where you are going when you leave. So that you don't become so bitter against your own party, against your colleagues. To think they removed me because they're jealous of me. No, I was in parliament myself. I was a deputy minister of works. I left happily, I lived a happy life. So know where you are coming from, because you are going there. Don't create problems in this unity in the party or in the government.
And briefly, very briefly, community members, they are seeing these issues of corruption happening before their eyes. But for some reason, they are scared of blowing the whistle or they don't know how to blow the whistle. What message do you have for them briefly?
What I've picked up is not because they are scared. What I've picked up in these few months and even that time when I was a deputy minister of works is that they have been blowing the whistle, but nobody listened to them. This is what is we have now. It's not that they are scared, but they got tired of blowing a whistle when nobody played the ball. So they just gave up. And that's why you see, it leads into voter apathy. I can give you as a example of Katima Eben. The last by-elections, fifteen thousand registered voters in Katima Eben. Because I was there that time, I was already retired. And how many people turned up to vote? Only three thousand five hundred came to vote. And how many votes did the swap get? One thousand eight hundred. Out of the fifteen thousand, you win which one thousand eight hundred? You should be critically asking the question, say, where did we go wrong? What are these twelve thousand people or eleven thousand people thinking that they decided not to turn up? Either they decided, if they were going to turn up, they were going to vote for the opposition. So if they want to remain loyal to the ruling party, they don't turn up. They're fed up. So we have voter apathy because of what is happening. People are tired of reporting, people are tired of malpractice, so they abstain from voting. And it's time that we ignite this to get the people to have more confidence in the government and the parties that rules. We have a duty as a ruling party, for example, which I belong to, we have a duty to ignite the feelings, the views and opinions and mindset of our voters. So that we don't create voter apathy. We have that duty.
Minister, Samkasa James Samkasa, thank you very much for your time. And we can tell that it's not business as usual. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. I came to do my job from my village, I'll go back to my village. So I'm here to do my job, not to leisure around. Thank you very much.
You are highly appreciated, Minister.